Thank you, Ray. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, please, if you can call roll.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
Okay, all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting held, the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up is, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the August 27th, September 4th, September 13th, and September 19th meetings, if I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. Is there any discussion? Do not call roll, please.
Tom Hack.
Hi.
Steve Jeffries.
Hi.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Linda Grassi.
Hi.
Motion carried, and it takes us to special reports.
We have, uh, two tonight. I have Chris Healy, who's with the board, his standing report about Parkside and Riverview. And then after that, we have Julie Bialko, our Latchkey supervisor, who's gonna give a quick update on the Latchkey program. Can you start with Chris?
Um, Riverside, finishing up some items, getting, uh, trying to bring in some remaining furniture that hasn't come in yet. Colors working on punch list items, waxing floors, which, what's going on there? The sites coming, I think it's just about stabilized, we're looking to get some water out there, give it a blessing, convert the retention base and install some post-construction state. Madison, building wise, same things going on, we're waiting for the scissor lift, the dock lift in the back to come in, that's been delayed several weeks, but we'll get there as soon as possible. Same thing with the garage doors of both buildings, the architect just picked the color for them on Friday, so we put a couple weeks out, we're getting those in between, and they plan, and we'll do some. The parking area in Phase Two, Madison, we're paving tomorrow and Thursday, and we're out there landscaping this evening, actually. And the goal is to be able to turn that over to by the end of next week.
Awesome.
And be out here and have your parking. I think the architects coming through to do their formal punch list on both buildings October 11th, we're trying to get everything taken care of where we can to then punch list. I know there's some growing pains in the buildings with the technology now, we're trying to work through all that with everybody and screw everything up.
With the technology, the phone systems, is all of that working now?
Yes.
Everything's back up?
I know, there was an issue with connectivity, I think, I don't know if the static issues have been figured out yet, I haven't heard anything.
I have not heard an update.
But that's an issue, I want to understand, it's not an issue here, and it's not the buildings, it's a connectivity issue for AT&amp;T.
Okay. So, I, this is the first I've heard of the architect punch list, well, can you describe that in some more detail, what that really entails?
Architect will walk through every inch of that building and make sure it's, we've done our job. If we have a hole in the wall, I'm just being drastic, we'll check and make sure all the caseworks installed, anything that's naked or damaged, just make sure everything is installed per drawing and specification. If something is installed quite properly, we'll note that out to us, and we'll fix that if it runs from anything to maybe replacing the floor tile to, we have the wrong doors, something's wrong in color, you know, a window's not working.
You know, we've had a few complaints about the lights being on after 10 o'clock, I know there were on a motion sensor for efficiency, um, we had that all.
That's all taken care of now, the motion sensors are deactivated, they're off at 10 o'clock.
Now, there's another issue, I know the settlement agreement is to have lights off in the parking lot at 10 o'clock, now there's, uh, another complaint, that the lights on the building are too bright. Is there, is there even any options?
I talked with the electrician today, he's getting with the, it depends on what type of fixtures he has. He's looking into that and see if there is the option, and within your lighting control system to do that.
It was no part of the settlement agreement, but we're trying to still be a good neighbor. The pictures that were sent, um, from, uh, Mr. Rose, the administrator in Concord, seemed to be that these, the neighbors actually went on the property to take pictures, and when you're that close, it's bright, you just don't know how bright it is in their own residence.
Is it brightness from the LEDs?
Yes.
The, the, the core, the white?
Yeah, all your lighting anymore is LED, and they were like, put off light, but it's your security wall packs that are around the building, and without those, you have a dark side.
Right.
And we can have totally dark.
No.
No.
That's something that we could discuss, and with the security, we can look, also, maybe talk to Sheriff's Department, they could talk to, um, homeowners, or whoever's on that side there, if they have any questions.
You'll have the same, you have the same lighting at Madison, now those will be on the motion detector, Latchkey wall pack, they go out, they go just, they're very faint, and for a reason, you know, if the sheriff's come in or somebody's coming through, they'll turn off. If somebody's in the building and they're leaving, they'll turn off. A deer runs through the parking lot, they're gonna turn off, and that was an issue with that.
Okay. And just to put things in perspective for everybody here, and for people who might be listening in, so there's a, from earlier conversation, there's a year warranty on the building, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, periodically, are there, what does that, what does that interaction look like?
Let me back up, there is a one-year material workmanship warranty, where it, just like your warranty on your car, you may fix, where everything's taken care of in that year. That does not mean you don't have a bunch of things that are warranted for 10 years, 15 years, or something like that. But at the end of 11 months, that's why it's called the 11-month walk, for we, along with the district, any architect will walk through those buildings and identify any items that need to be taken care of, and that will be done. So, at the end of 12 months, that building is exactly what it was, that's anything on architect that was the day.
And then to your point about, about things having longer warranty by the OEMs, right, the original equipment manufacturer would have longer warranties on specific pieces of equipment, things like that?
Yes, they do have longer warranties on your mechanical equipment, your boilers, things like that, and on, right, within the building, your technology equipment will have, I don't know what the warranties are, but it's typically longer than that year is where we come in, we take care of everything. Well, we'll, we'll take care of, but what we're doing right now is, we have a responsibility to go through the buildings and generate our own punch list, and correct those items, and we give that to the architect, and the architect will review when they walk through on 11th, to make sure that we've addressed all those, and then they'll list any other items that they feel need addressed.
With the architect walk-through on the 11th, is it typical that a representative from the district participates in that?
Can, but you're gonna have somebody with them all day. It's not typical, they'll talk, I know, there's no actor, they had given the architect the schools list of things, and they will use that when they're walking through too, and include those if they're warranted on the punch list.
Okay.
I don't think you necessarily need to have somebody with, they're gonna have a long, long day doing that.
Okay. And, and, again, I'm sorry, just to so many details, is it done simultaneously, or is it, you do one, one building first, and then the same team goes to the second building after?
I would admit that it's gonna be one after the other.
Okay, so it's the same team going through, it's not two teams operating simultaneously?
Yeah, the architect will cover and do the general construction, we'll have the commission agent will also come in, you'll have the electrical engineer come in, and all the engineers will go through their stuff, too. So, the architect's punch list is gonna be, it includes everything, it's not just what you see, what you probably see.
The administrators and teachers are also keeping lists, if they notice something in the classroom, or somewhere else, they're keeping on this.
That's good, good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions? We're gonna cut loose, thanks.
The buildings look amazing.
Thank you for what you guys have done. Really looks great.
So exciting.
All right, I wasn't gonna ask this, but are you sleeping better tonight?
You know, I have to tell you, I did not sleep last night.
Oh.
And I tell you what woke me up, I missed the Buildings and Grounds meeting because I had an emergency with my daughter, and I, it bothered me, it was the first meeting. I woke up last night at midnight thinking, oh my crap, I missed that. And I was okay, I even got up and I checked the board's website to make sure it's today. So, that did kick me up a lot.
No, if Nick wasn't here, that board meeting would be back in like 1992 or something. He keeps us up to date.
Chris, I know that you really shepherded, I know there's still more work to be done, and you're not the last one we'll see of you, but, um, at least, maybe not in this forum, but, you know, certainly onsite and what have you, but definitely, you know, I think I speak for the members of the board, which I've already been expressed, but, but thank you for all your hard work and diligence and focus, and, and keeping the, the best interests of, of the district, as well as Icon, in, in mind, and, and really delivering some really top-quality schools to the district, so, thank you very much. [applause]
Thanks for being here.
Julie?
Julie, you've been our Latchkey supervisor for, what would you say, 12 years?
Since 2008, I joined the district 2004, and have held this position since 2008, so, just the bottom?
Yep.
Okay. So, the Latchkey program is 100% self-funded, and takes no money from the general fund, and includes all the payroll benefits, equipment supplies, and snaps. I've only increased my rates one time in 10 years, current rate is $3 per hour, which is the lowest in the surrounding area, anybody that I've spoke to, I get together with some of the Chardon and Mener supervisors, and I am the lowest in the area. And our summer program is a big financial benefit to the program as well. My staffing and enrollment, approximately 450 students enroll in the program as of Thursday, when I put this together, and it's growing very quickly, especially at Riverview and Parkside, they are huge. I have three staff members there in the morning and afternoon at both of those, Parkside and Riverview, and two at the Buckeye and Melridge. Parents really like the Latchkey program, because it can be used as needed, they don't have to have a schedule, they don't have to commit to anything, they can call me or email me the night before and say my child needs to go to Latchkey, and that's fine. Many of my staff members have over 15 years of service, and right behind them, I have a bunch that have like 10, 10 years as well, so they're sticking around till they retire, I think, hopefully. All the staff members are CPR certified and CPI trained, as well as Public School Works My summer camp, which I said is a big part of the budget, I offer 10 weeks of summer camp at a cost of $145 per week. The cost includes everything to the parent, includes daily field trips, transportation, snaps, craps, everything they need, they just bring their kid with, with lunch, and we're all set to go. My staffing for the summer consists of regular contracted Latchkey staff and college students, either pursuing a career in education, or I have quite a few that are former Latchkey students, that like to come back as counselors. Some of our summer outings there are UC, Waldemar Park, Science Center, Zoo, Splash of Bill, we try to keep them busy, we try to leave the school every day, sometimes it's for a full day, sometimes it's just half a day. This past summer, I had, one of my biggest summers, I had over 110 families that were registered with 148 kids coming to camp. They don't all come every, every week, every day, but they come, some come all the time, they sign up for all weeks, some just come every couple weeks. And then I put some pictures here of our outings, we do pools, we, that was a welcome sign, that one of our places that we went to had ready for us when we got there, which was really nice. We go to petting zoos, down there is where Jungle Tiger came, and I'll, that's my summer staff that was holding the snake down there. That's really about it, and as I said, we're growing every day, I may need to add some staff to the, to the, to the newer buildings, because they're, they're pretty busy.
Yes.
We've always heard great things about your program.
Thank you.
Really great, thank you so much.
They do homework and everything there, they get help with homework?
They, um, we don't have one-on-one help for homework, we do offer like quiet time, with 20 minutes, where they can get their homework done if they need to, I do supply them with Chromebooks there, I have my own set of Chromebooks, so they can get their homework done. Sometimes the fifth graders will help the little ones get their homework done, parents really like that, because when they pick them up from Latchkey, they're on the go all night, so they like to get their homework done.
That's good.
Any questions?
Excellent.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, that takes us to old business, if anyone has anything?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Regarding the Haddon property, I know I've been receiving many emails, and probably the rest of the board has, Mr. Dr. Keilis, is there any updates to the Haddon property, if you want to discuss that?
I do, in fact, that's my whole superintendent report today is just that.
You can have it.
Nice segue.
All right, then we'll move on, to new business, if anyone has anything from new business? All right, that takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports, first thing is superintendent's business advisory, my, the first one is October 23rd at 7:00 a.m., I see, so we'll have an update after that. Curriculum and programming and booster, is Mr. Miley?
Yes, no meetings as of yet, we will have a report next month, for sure.
Great. Finance, audit personnel, strategic plan, Mrs. Grassi?
We have not, he had a finance meeting, although I expect one coming up sometime in October, because we have the five-year forecast due in November this year. And strategic plan, we had a brief meeting, which we talked about at our last work session, we had a brief meeting, um, two weeks ago, and the district administration put together an update for the work session that we had last week, that, that outlined the plan for moving forward with the strategic plan, and how we're gonna recraft our mission and values and beliefs, and work into the strategic plan, um, the culture playbook that the district has moved forward with using for the staff and the students, and so incorporating all that into the strategic plan seemed like a really great idea, and so it was a really short meeting, it was awesome, because it was really short, but it was really short because we all agreed that that was the way to proceed, and so we'll hear more soon, I'm sure.
Great. Buildings and grounds, operations, alumni, Mr. Hack?
Um, as far as Buildings and Grounds, we did have a meeting last week, um, and then we all learned the update on the new schools just earlier in this, in this meeting. But, you know, the, the summer staff and Mr. Weiner really jumped through hoops and got the, the buildings ready, um, you know, a lot of incremental updates and improvements throughout Riverside and the other schools, um, and, and I know that, that overall, Mr. Weiner, you were happy with the support you had of the summer, and, and if you could just highlight some of the things that, that you had been able to accomplish.
We had the, to start out at Madison Avenue, to get out of Madison Avenue, which was a huge project, to be able to get into trailers, Brian Goodrich, one of the maintenance men, took that job on, we had moving vans, we had trailers, we got everything out in a timely fashion, did a couple of PR moves for a lady whose husband passed away, we had a heart that was left there where the gentleman was at, we removed it and were able to, to give it to one of our staff members. We, we removed a lot, we also got our generator that was very expensive out, we removed 18 unit vents, we got them re-deployed in Lamuth, so we're gonna have a better heating season over there. That was a lot of the big things, we took a lot of small things out, motors, stashed them on shelving, we were able to use one of them this morning for air conditioning at Melridge, um, so that worked out real well. The, the big challenge, getting back into the new buildings, and, um, everybody in the district, between teaching staff, principals, um, my wife, parents, everybody, well, my wife got to work with Melissa, again, that's a real story.
She was on her way.
I let inferior work go by.
She was on stacks, I'm just saying.
But I just wanted, I just wanna say, it wasn't just, um, a group here and there, it was everybody jumping in to get these new buildings up and running, teachers coming in, unloading boxes, um, the kids during the summer cleaned all of our buildings, worked with, uh, short staff, custodial staff, and we still got our parking lots done, we got some Band-Aids on a parking lot done over at Lamuth. That's some of the highlights. Also, at your door today, finally, is our plowing contract, that I'm gonna be switching out to another company, I've done a lot of research with them, looking for them to put on a show this year, hopefully not allow us to know, but, um, with Parkside and Riverview added on to our district and the walkways, I'm hoping that we're gonna have a smooth winter, and this guy, I've already sat down, spoke to him, explained me, and he gets me, and so hopefully we're gonna have a great winter together. So, that's kind of us in a nutshell.
And just tying to that, not to believe we're going to clean scrap too much, but I said in an earlier meeting, that, you know, you don't, you heard consistently the update from Chris and Icon, but there's a ton of work that, that you and your staff did, that Dr. Malacher, and Dr. Keilis, and, and Mr. Placco, and many others worked behind the scenes to make the transition happen, it, you know, so we played integral roles in, in all that, the staff and the, and everybody else.
Everybody, amazing.
Yep, how we came together to make that happen, and...
Yeah, it's, uh, I just watched it. And I walked fast like I was going somewhere that way, it's never the way I was.
That's a two-way statement, he doesn't have to walk.
Yeah.
That's cool.
But with purpose.
With a purpose.
With purpose.
That's good. I, I did not, I was unable to attend the alumni association, so I stayed on my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jeffrey, is policy and legislative?
We have not had a meeting, and there's nothing new under legislation, so that's all I have to report.
Easy peasy. All right, Mr. Keilis, the superintendent's report.
All right. I'm gonna give a chronological, um, list of events that occurred since September 11th. As you know, Painful Township is interested in the property behind Haddon, we did receive a, a letter back in the spring about wanting that property for a dollar, and I know that didn't, um, you know, we weren't agreeable with that, and they had a lot of different options. But I was surprised to receive a letter on September 11th from Painful Township zoning inspector, Rich Constantine, who's giving notice that the township intended to rezone Hale, Buckeye, and Haddon from residential to community service institutional zoning. And I, it's a longer email, but I, I cut a couple of parts out here just to read the board. One was, what's the rationale behind, you know, sending us that letter? And he said, in the email, the rationale behind the action was that the expansion, signage, and other aspects of the asset management are more easily accomplished when users are conforming rather than legal non-conforming in zoning terminology. And I think what he meant by that is, back in 2013, when we had the digital sign here, it was easier to get the sign by being CS than being residential. I think it also played in our advantage as well, having the cell tower here, from what I read between the lines in the, in the subsequent email was, that we most likely wouldn't be able to get a cell tower if we were residential here. At that point, we weren't talking about disposing of property, and, um, you know, thinking about the potential of a facility plan, we knew we were gonna hold on to this piece of property, so over 100 acres of, of property. He went on to say, with the township initiating the action, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood, it's not the Board of Education that's asking for this rezoning, it came out of the right field, they're saying, hey, we want to initiate the action to rezon our property, the board's property. There's really no paperwork burden on the district, and the township has already declared a waiver of zoning fees for the district. Went on to say, it would be considered a harmonious coincidence that the three sites mentioned here would actually be included in a community service zoning district. Went on also to say, we are also, we also understand that prior to disposing or selling of the lands involved, they must first be offered to another educational institution, which we have, with the ESC, Educational Service Center. And he goes on to say, thus zoning is in place for another educational institution to acquire these properties as conforming use. Well, we understand that, but the problem is, we have only one entity that is interested in the property, because we've only offered it to public entity, and we haven't decided, we haven't agreed to a, a purchase price on either one of these properties yet. And say if something were to go awry, and they decided not to buy the property, who else in the public sphere is going to be interested in the property? We don't think that's, uh, that's a good practice, that it devalues the property. And at the end, it says, I hope our, it is our hope that you will support this initiative as though you had submitted the application. Well, we didn't submit the application, and we're not in favor of the rezoning. I sent a response back, quite curt, that said, interesting timing. And then I got a, an email back that said, well, why do you, what do you mean, interesting timing? And, and my email said, it is quite simple, this rezoning could limit the board to just public interest, but they had an issue on the front burner, this move makes me think it may be politically driven. Please explain why this is an issue now. And what I meant by that is, if schools have been around for 80, 90 years, why are we doing it now? I think I know why, I wanted them to explain it to me. If it isn't then, I would advise the township to wait until we have done, and Lake and Gargant County ESC are due diligence. The board has not decided anything, because more needs to be explored to determine what is best for the entire Riverside community, you know, so we're not, we, we also have to answer to Painful Township, but Painful Township is the only, not the only township we have to answer to. We serve the communities of Concord, Leroy, Grand River, a part of Northern Chardon, a part of Painful City, it's not only Painful Township. So, I also received a letter from David Rattich, I believe that's how you pronounce his name. He's the director of Lake County Planning Community Development, the Lake County Planning Commission. The email I received was on Monday, September 16th, 2019. And he went on to say that Ohio Revised Code requires local townships to give recommendations to the Lake County Planning Board if they want to rezon, okay? And that recommendation comes from the Lake County Planning Commission, goes to the township, and township decides whether or not they want to take that recommendation. It's my understanding that historically speaking, they take the, um, recommendation from the Lake County Planning, uh, Commission. So, they had a meeting today at 5:30, and Gary and I attended, and, um, not only did I respond to Mr. Rattich's email, through a phone call with Gary, some of the same arguments we expressed on the phone, were the same ones we presented today at the meeting. And among those are, we are not in favor of the efforts to rezon, a rezoning will limit the sale of land only to public entities, it will stifle our attempt to attract all potential buyers for the property should the ESC decide not to buy Haddon or Hale, and again, Buckeye was also thrown in that mix, and because of our facility plan, there's a good chance that Buckeye may not be around if our second and third, uh, phase goes through. And we're on to say that the effort to rezon will not only have a negative effect on Haddon and Hale, but also Buckeye, as I said, we still need to finish our appraisal, the Lake and Gargant County still needs a schedule and appraisal, you can't even talk about the sale of the property until we know what the value is. We then can begin discussions with the township about the back portion of Haddon, if it's not directly sold to the ESC, and we said that we're not closing the door to that. We also wanted to point out that there's no immediate urgency, the park is a park, there's no looming doom, we're not closing it, we're not, you know, the next couple days, we're not gonna build something on it, close it down, it is still a park. And, oh, and what we want to do is, to complete our due diligence, we owe it to the entire Riverside community, including but not limited to Painful Township, that's what we've mentioned. Again, we're still maintaining the park, and the rezoning would basically strip the value of the property, making it, uh, what I believe is a township's self-fulfill prophecy to obtain the parcel behind Haddon at little or no cost. We're not saying that they can't pursue the property, but the proposal in April, after the board looked at it, $1 isn't gonna work, it won't work. And I also wanted to mention that we're on the board's timeline, it's the board's property, it's the board's timeline, not any individual or any other public entity. public entity. And we also mentioned at the meeting, too, if you think back, I don't know how many of you were on the board back when we sold property to Merrick Hutchinson. Merrick Hutchinson, Chris Connolly, the mayor, author, and council, wanted to preserve what he called green space there.
And that's Grand River.
I'm sorry. Did I say Valley? Grand River. It was three or four acres, and I remember they bought it for over $200,000, that property, just to maintain it as green space for the children in Grand River. It's one thing we really didn't talk about too much, but that is the history behind it. As the board knows, we created a letter, we sent it to the trustees, we also sent it to the planning commission. It was included in the members' packets today. It didn't look like they had much of a chance to read it prior, but they did take some time out at the meeting to read the letter, where the board expresses their stance on this issue. So they took a vote after our presentation and after they discussed it, and it was unanimous that they're supporting the district in recommending against the rezoning of the properties. That's where we are with it. Before the meeting, I did talk to Mike Manery, the administrator, again. I reached out over there because I don't think it's a good idea to have this thing just keep on moving around nebulously without having some type of discussion with them. And I did express to Mr. Manery that it's not, I don't think it's the board's desire not to remain, that they have that portion remaining a park, but we have to look at all options. We have to look at all of them, which still be willing to sit down with them after we have some discussion with the ESC. And I left it at that. He appreciated the call. I think he understands our stance. So that's where we are with it right now. From what I understand, though, the trustees do not have to take that recommendation, historically speaking. I understand that. But I think the meeting's what, on the 7th?
October 7th is the zoning commission meeting, where they will decide on the zoning of those properties. And I think there's a public hearing that goes with that. And then once, if they do approve that, I think it goes to the trustees for approval after that.
Are you guys going to that meeting?
So we're planning to attend that meeting on October 7th.
Okay.
Tell you, zoning meetings have been a lot of fun over the last couple of...
Yeah. Successful.
So that's where we stand with it. I don't have any other, no other communication, really. There's no one really in the audience but one person. I think he was there because he was driving his mother, who's an older lady, to and from the meeting. I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah, but I think, kind of summarizing this in my own mind, is we're looking for balance, right? It's, we've got a lot of constituencies within our district. We're trying to keep everybody whole, and I don't think anybody's, I'm not aware of anybody being against the space behind Haddon remaining green, but it needs to be done in a way where everybody is treated equitably. And in the current scenario, that, in my opinion, is just not how that's done.
I think down the line, after we get the appraisal, appraisal is going to be what the value of that land is without the rezoning and what it would be with the rezoning, because it'll show just how much it has been devalued if it had that, if this zoning goes through. And like I said, it's not that we haven't reached out to say, let's talk. Give us time. Give us time to finish our appraisals, to really look at this, explore all different options and how we might be able to work something out.
Okay. Are we good? All right. Thank you for going to that meeting today. Okay, that takes us on to Mr. Placco's report for treasures.
Okay, I'm gonna, it's gonna be fairly short, though. And as we said, on October 7th is the zoning commission meeting, discussing the rezoning of Haddon, Hale, and Buckeye. The following day, on October 8th, is Painful Township's Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, where they are going to hear and talk about the band bleachers, as we've talked about in our previous meetings, with us putting, you know, putting those band bleachers that we let put in at the end of the stadium. Painful Township is requiring a site plan of the Riverside campus with elevations and things like that, which is kind of ironic of the timing of that, because we didn't have to do that. We put the turf in, you know, two, what was it, two summers ago. And the veterans all went in. I'm assuming there was no issue with that. So CT consultants filed for a variance to, you know, forego that requirement, which will be heard at that Board of Zoning Appeals meeting on October 8th.
They'd be in attendance?
We plan on being in attendance to the issues.
We'll see the consultants.
We have, CT consultants will be there as well, and the only issue is it conflicts with our work sessions scheduled for the same night, because we have, the zoning appeals meeting's at 6:30 our work session, at 6:00.
I say we reschedule our work session.
I was going to ask if we can just cancel that meeting, because I know we're supposed to talk about compensation schedules, and we haven't had time to really look into that, and just wanted to see if we wanted to just push it to November's work session, and because November's work session was going to be on November 14th to talk about employee recognition, and maybe we just do two topics in one night?
Yeah.
And, you know, we had some issues trying to schedule those dates in the first place.
No, I think that's great. I think just...
So we're just going to cancel that?
Not, yeah. Cancel October 7th, 8th.
October 8th.
Great, perfect.
Because in the following day, October 9th, we're doing a state of schools update at, I think it's Oakbridge Church, that evening as well.
Well, yeah, there's no reason. It's, no, that's good. It's okay.
Gone.
Disappeared from our calendars, just like that.
We're seeing much of the email reminder.
I'm not going to figure out how to delete it.
How to delete it.
And then, a couple of updates I have. First is with the county auditor's office.
Gone.
Just like that.
Second half tax settlement this year was late again, just like the first half settlement. So basically, for our second half settlement, we received an advance of $10 million back in July of 2019. Then on September 11th, we received a $3 million advance, and on September 18th, we finally received our settlement of 3.2 million, which is the balance of our settlement at that time. I'm not too familiar with the Ohio Revised Codes of Governance at this point, but we're going to look into it in more detail. The county auditor's office paid us interest of $252.32 for being late at the Lake County treasurer rate, which is .57, but we can earn between 2.25 and 2.5% in Star Ohio without actually doing any work to invest those funds. We questioned, I think Michelle, her name's Prenell, she's the chief deputy auditor for Lake County, and she said by statute, they can only pay interest at the Lake County rate and not what we put in. We had some discussions about how many, how much of the funds we can advance, because going forward, I'm going to start with question advances on a regular basis, because this, we're losing out on interest income on those settlements when you have millions of dollars. It, you know, very quickly, you can earn interest on those funds, and we better have those in our coffers and not sitting at the county auditor's office working through their ongoing system issues and reconciliation issues. They also developed a new report for our settlements, because their new system is very hard to read compared to the old report, so they offered a new report that's more similar to our old one. The issue is, when they gave it to us this time, it didn't tie out to the act of settlement report, the numbers were different, so it wasn't really helpful at all. So we're continuing to work through those challenges. I know all the school treasurers in Lake County have been in contact and have been talking to the auditor's office. There's a lot of inconsistent communications. I know Lou Gonon from, he's the treasurer from Perry and Fairport-Curlin, he had an email from the county auditor's office on September 4th that said, the Hope would have the settlement out the following day. He had payroll due at one of his districts on that Friday, was hoping for the settlement. That day came, received no funds, and then we, he ended up having to scramble the funds available to make payroll, and that was Fairport-Perry. They were worried about having the settlement investment short or early to have the funds to make their payroll, because they had funds invested like that. Also, our, for like our bond retirement fund, which is Fund 02, we made our debt payments for the construction. Our payments are due October 1st. US Bank requires it 10 business days in advance, so they were due to US Bank on September 17th, which was before we got our tax settlement. But because we had, because the bond issue was fairly new, we had a premium that we generated, and we sold those bonds, so we had the cash available to make those debt payments. But Madison Schools did not have enough money to make their debt payments, so they had to request an additional advance to get those funds in time to make sure they made their debt payments that were due. So there's a lot of, a lot of the school treasurers have been talking, and we're going to do some research to see where those Ohio Revised Code requirements for what payment should be made and requesting advances on a regular basis, so at least we know we can get our cash flow, you know, corrected and not from these late settlements that could hurt us. I know Mr. Galley said they've been continuing to work on those issues and working with the vendor, but, you know, we haven't seen any progress from the first half settlement to the second half settlement, so hopefully the first half settlement for next year, there's some improvement in that, but we'll monitor that closely. On tonight's agenda, we have a resolution to change the joint financing district allocation of funds, which would be going in effect if the levy is renewed on this November, I think it's November 5th on the ballot this November. Right now, the allocation is generally based on enrollment, or the new allocation will be based on the proportion of valuations of each class of revenues. Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, residential, commercial, and public utility will be divided based on each district's proportionate share of that. What that does is, because over the years, the, you know, when the financing district was first adopted, I believe the intent was to reallocate funds from the power plant to some of the surrounding districts, and then over time, with the devaluation of the power plant and the aggressive phase out of the tangible personal property tax and the first we got from the state, that balance has, it became unbalanced over the years, especially since the last renewal. So we recognize those changes, but by changing this allocation would result in an increased revenue, increased revenue for Riverside at the same tax rate. No increase in taxes, but an increase in revenue. All of the districts have approved it already, we're the last one that needs to approve it, so once we approve it, it'll be effective, assuming the levy is renewed. Even the ESC has passed their portion, so just the timing of our scheduling of meetings, we were the last one in line. And then I gave an update back in March on the joint financing district, kind of went through explaining what it is, how it's allocated, and how we use those funds. I'm going to do an update at our regular meeting in October, before the election. And then we're also going to work on putting out some information about that levy, because we've been waiting on the ESC to provide information, and they have not provided, so Mr. Carebly and I are going to work on putting it together so that information's on our website, on our Facebook, things like that, so everyone has that information. And I believe the levy committee's going to send out flyers to registered voters sometime later October. But we'll have more on that next month regarding the financing district. And then with the extended deadline for the five-year forecast now goes, now is due, the five-year forecast presentation will not be October, I'm going to do that in November. And then on tonight's agenda, we have the booster group, annual booster group approval. We received, paid work back on all of this, all of the booster groups, except for the Flying Art Booster Club had not gotten us the information yet, so we'll have a later meeting once we, once we check down that information from them. But all the other agreements have been provided by the other booster groups. And then lastly, on tonight's agenda, there's an approval to create Fund 467, which is for the Student Wellness and Success Funds. They're an additional funding source, part of the budget that'll be counted for in a separate fund from the general fund, so anything that we can supplant that we're currently doing, we can use those funds to move off the general fund to these funds, and any type of new programs, we can, it'll be separate from the general fund and from the five-year forecast. And that pretty much concludes our report. Anybody has any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the board president. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Yes, I'm Mark Falcone. A couple of questions I have concerning the financing for Phase 2 of our plan. Who's going to pay for it? How's it going to be funded? How much is it going to cost for $100,000 tax addition on the house? Are these numbers yet to appear, or is this something you guys are crunching, or?
I think we're working on finalizing that cost of what Phase 2 will be. We, as a board, we haven't had a final discussion as, as far as what the final plan will all include. You know, there's still, you know, we have a recommendation that the subgroup had worked together with, but as a board, we haven't finalized. I think the last projection was around $130 million, I believe, somewhere in that range would be, it would be a bond issue type of levy. We don't know timing yet, based on estimates of what the milage could be, because milage rates will change based on valuation changes and interest rate changes.
Correct.
That may happen. But I think the current projection was around a 5.7 range, but we still, that's not been finalized. We're still working through that process to see, so it could be lower, it could be higher, you know, depending on what interest rates do.
Yeah.
Do we cut something from the project, you know, and I'm just reassessing what that is.
When do you think these numbers will be kind of finalized? Is it in November?
Oh, because it's, I'm not really sure. Our timeline, for sure, we won't, obviously, there's nothing on the ballot this November, but as far as whether it's March of next year or November of next year, it's yet to be determined.
Yeah, that's March, six months away, so...
Right. The primaries, March 17th.
Yeah. And that, if we do go for a special ballot in March, where's that money coming from? Is that a general fund money, or?
It'd be a, it's called a bond issue type of levies. It'd be a new levy that the voters would vote on, and then that would go into a separate fund. So basically, when the levy passes, we're authorized to sell bonds. Whatever the amount is from those bonds goes into a construction fund, and the debt payment comes out of what's called a debt service fund. So the levy each year proceeds from that levy would be deposited in a debt service fund that would pay those debt payments over the length of that debt service.
Okay, good.
And as far as timing for knowing the amount, for example, if we decide to go on March, we have to file, we have to pass a resolution that's a necessity as a board. That would go to the county auditor's office to be certified. They'll certify a milage amount, and then come back to the board to do a resolution to proceed. That deadline would be sometime around mid-December, so if there was the possibility of being on March, by mid-December, we'd have to have those numbers finalized, and then that would be, you know, obviously, at that point, we'd know for sure this is what is happening. If we decide to not pursue a March issue, and I don't think anybody's really considering an August issue of 2020, but if it was November of 2020, sometime in early August of 2020, those numbers will be finalized. With deferring to an, deferring to a November levy, we'd have a new year of valuations, which could change that milage up or down depending on what the valuations do.
Great. Well, if you can expedite that, it would be great, because we're all interested to figure out how this is going to be funded, who's going to pay for it, what's the cost of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I'm Brian Massey, the group called Lobbyists for Citizens. I was at this meeting probably six months ago, as Placco mentioned, that there was some problems with the payments from the auditor's office, I think the office, but it seemed like it had been quite some time.
Yes.
Reading the article in the News Herald, where they are now admitting to the problems, very disconcerting. I just wanted you to know that Lobbyists for Citizens has filed a complaint with the state auditor's office. We're not, not sounding blame to anyone, other than we do not have the confidence that the local auditor's office can release themselves, and I think they need more resources in there to help them solve this problem, whatever it wants. So I'll just let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If we have nothing else, that takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. First up is finance and audit.
Yes, we have a motion to approve the items listed on finance and audit. Consent agenda is recommended by the treasure items A through M. My second?
Second.
I'm just going to read the donations before we have any other discussion. We have a donation from Asphalt Maintenance and VOB Striping to the Veterans Memorial. We have a donation from the Adam Lulow family, Tony and Tina Lovin, Ganley Village, DVA Ganley Village Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Fiat. These are all to the Riverside Veterans Memorial Fund, the Riverside Local Education Association, John Akher and Sarah C. And then we also have a donation of US flags for all the classrooms that have flag pull up Riverview Elementary School from Dean Bader. So we'd like to thank those folks for those donations, and I'm sure that the, on behalf of the Veterans Memorial folks, that they're very appreciative. I know that they've sold all their bricks, and so they're happy to have those donations. The memorial is pretty awesome. If you haven't seen it, go see it.
Oh, it's gorgeous.
Is there any... Is there any other discussion on any of these items, A through M? All right, well, if not, can we call the roll, please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Elinda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel. Consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent, items A through G. I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items? All right, well, if not, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Elinda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on the consent, on curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through D.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Roll, please. Jack Miley?
Aye.
Elinda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We should call it.
Buildings and grounds operations.
Motion to approve the items A through D on the buildings and grounds consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Gracie. Is there any discussion? Can we call the roll, please?
Elinda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to the Board of Education update. If anyone's got anything they would like to discuss?
Two, actually, well, two and a half. So, everybody, I want everybody to enjoy homecoming this weekend, it's homecoming. It's alumni night at the football game, so we'll have lots of old folks out there having some fun, so come down and enjoy that. I want to invite everybody to the band, the Lake County Band Show that's happening tomorrow at Mentor High School. I think that's at seven. I'm almost positive that's at seven, but that's all the bands from Lake County get together, and that's a great band show to get, get to go to, because it's local and kids have a great time. I also wanted to commend our band directors, Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Drain, for the exemplary behavior of our students at the last band show that I went to on Saturday. Our students were outstanding, not only in their performance, but in their behavior and their, their pride in themselves and their pride in their appearance and what they portrayed to the other families and people that were at this band show that was obviously not here at Riverside, was something to be seen. And parents were, not just Riverside parents, but this was families from other, other districts and whatever, that were commenting on the fact that our band was the only band who actually watched the other bands. And so, that, that was really significant, so.
So, I just would also like to comment on the dedication of the Veterans Wall on the thirteenth. For those of you who don't know, I'm actually a Navy veteran, and it was just, if you haven't had a chance to go out and see it, you need to go see it. The design is outstanding. The execution of, of construction is just perfect. It's really, it's, there's the wall, you've got the, the flag poles, one for the American flag, and then, then five additional for the services. It is, you know, I, you would think something so professionally done would be done by a larger entity than us. We did it...
I was shocked by how absolutely beautiful it was.
It is absolutely wonderful. Everybody was involved with doing that, did a first-rate job. It really is something to be proud of. I just wanted to recognize that.
I also wanted to say thank you to Dr. Mohawk-Barr and our English Department for the Night He Died book that we did for our summer reading. I happened to be at Riverside this morning and went and listened to the parents that were here to speak to our eighth through twelfth graders that day, and that was, it was so impactful. I mean, my children who are up, two of my three kids are up here at the campus, and both came home talking so much about the impact of hearing those parents speak firsthand about the loss of their childhood drunk driving. So, I've gotta say, like, just the fact that we gave our students something like this in summer reading was, I think, just phenomenal, because it was something the kids could actually relate to, and, you know, they heard what they said. I hope a lot of people got to listen to them, because it was, it was really impactful, hearing those parents say.
I have to give credit to the English Department. They brought that to me, so that came from them.
Well, Pete said it actually came from a parent. That a parent had come to them when they had seen the book. And so, I, I love that we listened to, you know, for people to think like, oh, I'm not gonna tell anybody anything, because nobody listens. It was a parent that came to Mr. Leatzos and said, "Here's this book that I think you should read," and everybody agreed, so thank you guys for doing that. And then tomorrow, RSC Golf starts the WRC tournament, so good luck to all those boys that are... It is.
Wow.
Yeah, I know.
Time flies.
They started the first one.
Right, I guess.
It's dark early. Before you know it.
Yeah.
We've got that WRC tomorrow. Anybody have anything else? All right, well, with that, then I will make a motion at seven fifty-five PM to adjourn to executive session for personnel matters with discipline and purchase or sale of property. If I could have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Elinda Gracie?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much.